Welcome to May 11th, 2023 Parma City Schools District Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Ms. Nucio.
Ms. Brock.
Ms. Brock.
Present.
Mr. Christ.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Ms. Schork.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Excuse me. So, Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm the meeting is being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can you please monitor livestreaming throughout the meeting? If there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I'm going to talk briefly about Issue Four. I am disheartened. I really wish people had seen the need for us to have a facility where we could have increased academic opportunities, increased athletic opportunities, increased vocational opportunities. It's very disheartening. I've lived in this district a long time, and it's quite the bummer. But that's enough. Dr. Smiley has a survey out, and we're going to listen to his survey next week. I don't want to rain on the parade of everybody that's here, but I do feel like I needed to say something about Issue Four. All right? So, thank you, and welcome, everybody. So, Dr. Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. We actually have a large gathering tonight, which is great to see. We're actually going to start with our Parma City Schools Foundation and the grant winners that are here tonight to be recognized. I just want to give a little bit of background. We're very lucky to have the Parma City Schools Foundation. They work very diligently to do everything they can to raise funds that specifically go to our students in the form of scholarships and also go to our teachers in the form of grants that fund innovations in the classroom that could not otherwise be purchased for any number of reasons. And this year, we had a really impressive number of grant applications, and I was fortunate enough this year to be a part of the process of actually selecting the recipients. And want to just commend the committee led by Dr. Phillips, who will speak to you in a second. Very organized process, very impartial process, and one that, I think, produced a very impressive selection of projects that would not otherwise be funded without the dedication to our students and to our district of the Parma City Schools Foundation. So, Dr. Phillips, do you want to say a few words in that microphone there, sir? And you can kind of turn a little bit.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Smiley, President Vaughn, and members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to discuss the Parma City Schools Foundation and to recognize the recipients of our fifth annual educator grants process. The Parma City Schools Foundation is a nonprofit organization founded in 2011. Led by a group of energetic and dedicated volunteers from all walks of life, the foundation is guided by its mission to enrich the educational experiences for all students of the Parma City School District. Because of the community's support over the past 12 years, we have been able to enhance many programs within the Parma City School District, including positive behavioral interventions and supports for students, known as PBIS, the STEM program, technology purchases throughout the district, incentives for students, scholarships for graduating seniors, and various educator and classroom grants. Since its inception, all of the foundation's fundraising efforts have been dedicated to enhancing educational opportunities for students. Our monies are obtained through our fundraisers, donations, and bequests. To date, we have raised over $300,000 to support the Parma City School District. Before we recognize our grant recipients, we invite you to support our fundraisers, especially our major fundraising event, our Taste of the Towns. If you like to eat and socialize, the Taste of the Towns is the place to be. Please mark your calendar for Wednesday evening, September 27th, at the Woodside Events Center at St. Michael's. The purpose of our educator grants process is to fund innovative classroom and school-wide projects that may not be possible through the typical school budgeting process. Educator grant recipients must utilize their funding within one year. The maximum amount we award for a grant is $500. Our educator grant committee members consist of, and if you're here, please wave, Jackie Marconi, who is our co-chair, Kim Childs, Alan Divas, Barbara Filippo, Sharon Arco-Jones, Rick Meeks, Dr. Smiley, Janet Smith, and myself. The committee used a rubric and followed a blind review with names omitted to determine the grant recipients. Thank you to the 41 teams of district educators who applied for foundation grants this year. While we couldn't fund all of the applications, a record number, we are proud to award a record 24 grants in the amount of $10,687.25. All of the applications were amazing. So congratulations to the following grant recipients. Please come forward when your name is called, and please hold your applause until the end. So congratulations to Zaraya Abdallah from Normandy High School, Teen Mental Health Summit,[389.24][389.24]$500. Jen Borash, Tiffany Duke, and Kim Feeney from Pleasant Valley Elementary School, How Can Properties or Practices Allow for Survival, $500. Debbie DeLassio-Brown from Green Valley Elementary School, Land Lab Improvements, $500. Kelly Kniglia and John Schlenk from Valley Forge High School, Fun and Functional Activities, Heather Canzerlo, Debbie Barowski, and Steve Neff from Pleasant Valley Elementary School, Unlock Your Potential, $498. Sarah Good from Greenbrier Middle School, Learning by Doing, a Measurement Project, $475. Ruth Gordon, Sarah Field, and Derek Kress from Thorough Park Elementary School, Meeting the Sensory Needs of Diverse Learners, $470. Kelly Hoven from Rich Brook Elementary School, Color Writing, $470. Chad Howard from Greenbrier Middle School, STEM Production Station Etching, $480. Kimberly James, Amy Spina, Joe Rasso, and Chad Howard from Greenbrier Middle School, Greenhouse, $500. Kendra King, Thorough Park Elementary School, Fabulous Fine Motor Skills, $251. Rebecca Lloyd from Parma Park in Renwood, Maria Howie from Thorough Park, and Laura Stover from Densler, elementary literacy specialists. Building the Foundation: Morphology Matters, $485. Bev Miller and Janet Williams from Pleasant Valley Elementary School, Recorder Karate Incentives, $500. Patrick Montana from Hillside Middle School, Introduction to CPR and AED, $489. Aaron Osterland from Normandy High School, Authentic Hispanic Children's Toys and Games, Joe Rasso from Greenbrier Middle School, Sublimation Project, $500. Kristen Rogers from Valley Forge High School, Choose Your Attitude, $500. Jen Schweitzer from Densler Elementary School, Here's Hank, Improving a Love of Reading, Sandra Sherry from Thorough Park Elementary School, Picture Perfect Science First Grade, Amy Spina from Greenbrier Middle School, Press On, $500. Cindy Sajak from Normandy High School, See It to Believe It, Using Models to Luminate Science Concepts, $500. Jennifer Wagner from Greenbrier Middle School, Let's Build Classroom Lego Wall, $350. Kim Ware from Densler Elementary School, Reading While Camping With My Buddy, $500. And last, but certainly not least, Debbie Woodworth, Val Pennington, and Rebecca Walter from Pleasant Valley Elementary School, Pack and Read Pouch, $500. So if all our recipients will please stand, and would you please join me in giving a warm round of applause for our 2023 grant recipients? Congratulations. We're very proud of you, and thank you for your time tonight.
To the recipients, too, we put them in the order of the list that the foundation gave, and then we called them alphabetically. So before you leave, Mrs. Marconi, would you be able to pass them out? So we'll have the certificates before you leave, and we will offer you the opportunity to leave as soon as we finish recognizing our students of Renwood and Parma Senior High. We will start with, let's see, we'll go with Mr. Keating. Come on up, Mr. Keating. The elementary students are probably a little more antsy to get their awards and their recognition. So as many of you know, if you've watched our board meetings or followed our board meetings, we've decided to spend the spring months really honoring our top achievers. We ask principals to choose their top achievers, and that's a very difficult conversation for many of them to have because it's difficult to really choose just those select few. And we will also recognize Parents of the Year from Renwood and Parma Senior Heights for, or two. So we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Keating.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm honored to recognize some wonderful students from Renwood. We're going to start the evening with our kindergarten students. Hayden Knapp, if she's here, could she please come up? There she is. Hayden is an amazing kindergarten student in Mrs. Baines's class. She is one of the top performing kindergarteners in all academic areas. She exceeds all grade level expectations and has high scores on her benchmark testing. She is reading well above grade level and has a wealth of knowledge about all topics that she loves to teach her classmates about. Hayden does a lot of self-directed learning in the classroom and even creates her own homework assignments. In the future, Hayden says that she wants to be a high school teacher so that she can help other kids learn and be smart. Next, I would like to call Maggie Ayers to the front, please. Oh, no, are you too nervous? Come on, sweetheart, you can do it. While she's coming up, I'm going to read a little bit about Maggie from Mrs. Medea. Maggie is an outstanding kindergarten student in Mrs. Medea's class. If Mrs. Medea is out sick for the day, Maggie could fully teach the class herself. She is always sharing her background knowledge across all of the areas with her classmates, and she brings a lot to every classroom discussion. She's excelling in all curricular areas and is especially thriving in her reading, writing, and comprehension. Apparently Maggie gives good massages because in the future she wants to either be a vet or a masseuse because her mom says she does a good job rubbing her feet. And Hannah McKinster, is Hannah here tonight? While she's walking up, I'm going to start reading about Hannah. She is an exceptional kindergarten launch student in Mrs. Drennan's class. Hannah is a hardworking and conscientious student that tries her best every day in everything that she does. She has excelled in kindergarten launch this year, mastering all her upper and lowercase letters, as well as all of her letter sounds. She is responsible and respectful and exhibits the bucket filler qualities each and every day. In the future, Hannah says that she would like to be a dancer because she's doing dance classes right now, and dancing makes her feel happy. Edison Kresak, is Edison here this evening? Here he comes. Edison is a high-achieving student in Mrs. Martincheck's first-grade class. His strong work ethic and perseverance in problem-solving has led him to great success. Edison excels in all of his academic areas. He consistently makes good choices and is a great leader and role model for his peers. In the future, Edison says he wants to be a YouTuber to make videos and make a lot of money. Aiden Taylor, come on down, Aiden. Here he comes. Aiden is an amazing first-grade student in Mrs. Cheme's class. He is one of the top performers in first grade based on his benchmarking math and reading scores. In addition, Aiden's report card grades met or exceeded grade level expectations in all subjects consistently during the first three marking periods of the school year. In the future, Aiden says that he wants to fix phones because his dad does it and is very good at it, and Aiden thinks he'll be good at it, too. So, Dad, he's taking after you. Joey Gallagher, Joey's here, I saw him. Come on down, Joey. Joey is a high-achieving second-grade student in Mrs. Gainer's class. His fluency scores and map benchmark assessment scores were all at the advanced level. He has earned straight A's all three quarters, and he is an asset to every classroom discussion. In the future, Joey wants to be a scientist because he'll get to do fun experiments and work with different kinds of chemicals. Congratulations, Joey. Isabella Duman, is Isabella here? Izzy? Here she comes. Izzy is one of our top performing second graders in Mrs. Caraffa's class. She has earned straight A's all three quarters. Her fluency scores and her benchmark map scores were well above benchmark in both the fall and winter. She goes above and beyond the required homework assignments each week as well. And in the future, Izzy wants to also be a YouTuber because it's fun and she can teach other people how to do stuff. Melanie Valentine, come on down, Melanie. Melanie is a high-achieving third grader in Mrs. Pfeiffer's homeroom. She has been on the honor roll all three quarters, scored in the advanced level on the Fall Third Grade Language Arts Ohio State Test, and completes all of her assignments on time and accurately. In the future, Melanie says she wants to be an artist or a vet because she really likes art and really loves animals. CJ Drennan, come on down. CJ is a high-achieving third grader in Mrs. Stewart's class. He has been on the honor roll all three quarters this year, scored in the advanced level on the Fall Third Grade Language Arts State Assessment, and completes all his assignments on time and accurately. In the future, CJ says he would like to be an All-Star NFL player because he really likes football, and he thinks he's really good at it. Kyle Roberts in fourth grade. Kyle is one of our outstanding fourth graders at Renwood. He has made the honor roll or merit roll all three marking periods of school year and scored well above benchmark on both the fall and winter benchmark assessments that we give. In the future, Kyle says he would like to be a paleontologist because he likes dinosaurs and would love to dig up dinosaur bones someday. Nathan is a high-achieving fourth grader at Renwood. He has made the honor roll all three marking periods this year, and he had the highest fourth grade score on the map benchmark assessment that we just took in the winter. He scored advanced in both the fall and winter map assessments as well. In the future, Nathan says he would like to be a scientist because he is smart and working with chemicals sounds fun. And my last student is Lillian Swart. Is Lillian here this evening? Come on down, Lillian. Lillian is an outstanding fourth grader at Renwood Elementary. She has made the honor roll all three marking periods of school year, and she has scored above the benchmark on both the fall and winter benchmark map assessments that we gave. In the future, Lillian says she would like to be an artist or a famous singer because her artwork is all over town, and she sang in the Renwood Choir this year. Congratulations. I just want to say I've been so lucky to be the principal at Renwood this year. It was such a hard choice to choose our students, but I've had a fantastic year being the principal there. So I would also like to recognize two of our wonderful parent supporters. Debbie Drennan, can you come on down? Debbie is a tireless supporter of the staff and students at Renwood. She's not only a parent of a third grader, CJ, who we just recognized earlier tonight, but she is also our building's kindergarten launch teacher and the treasurer of the Renwood PTA. She supports every building and PTA event, elicits and garners donations from local businesses for our staff and students, and does it all with a smile on her face. Thank you, Debbie, for being an outstanding parent supporter of Renwood. Hannah Wilcox, come on down. Hannah took on the role of PTA president last May and has worked tirelessly to honor and support the Renwood staff, students, and families this school year. She worked with the previous year's PTA to apply for the PTA School of Excellence Award, which Renwood was honored to accept earlier this school year. She worked closely with me this year to be sure our Renwood Bears had an assembly or an activity every month so that they could have a memorable final year at Renwood Elementary. Just last week, Hannah and the PTA honored the staff for Staff Appreciation Week with a different activity and raffle each day. Hannah has become such a fixture at Renwood that I sometimes forget that she isn't an employee of our school. Renwood's final year would not have been as memorable without Hannah's support. Thank you, Hannah, for all you've done this year for our staff and students.
All right. One more round of applause for all of Renwood's recognition. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Satell for our Parma senior recognized.
I'll bend over, I guess. Just want to say I'm really thrilled to be here to recognize some of our top achievers this evening. Really, sometimes we don't get an opportunity to do this enough. But I don't know, for those of you that know, Parma Council PTA Scholarship Night last night through the district, three high schools, we recognized many, many seniors receiving a lot of scholarship money. And then next week, I'll get the honor to recognize a good portion of our senior classes for some of their accomplishments. But certainly, these top achievers are warranted, and really, it's a great honor to be here to recognize you eight tonight. Our first winner is Elijah Boos. Elijah's a ninth-grade student. He carries a 4.42 grade point average. He's involved in tennis, swimming, and band. He's currently training to be a lifeguard. His future plans are to pursue something in computer science or artificial intelligence. Our other high achiever at the ninth-grade level actually is not here this evening. She called this evening and had some migraines the past two days. But I wanted to recognize Alexandra Martin. She carries a 4.30 grade point average and honors in pre-AP classes. She loves music. She's teaching herself right now to play the guitar. Her future plans are to pursue something in zoology and something to do with animals. Our next high achiever is James Huddelson. James has a 4.55 grade point average. His favorite subject is math. He loves working with 3D printing, and consequently, his future plans involve pursuing something in engineering. Victor right now carries a 4.50 grade point average. He's been involved in the school explore program. He's played soccer and club volleyball at the school, and his future plans are to pursue something in computer engineering. Currently, Dema carries a 4.60 grade point averages in high-level CCP courses. She's a member of NHS Girl Power and History Club. She holds a job at Starbucks doing all of that academic work. Awesome. And her future plans are to pursue computer science and/or engineering. Currently, Olivia has a 4.59 grade point average. She's involved in many activities at school. She was the captain and MVP of her soccer team. She's involved in our mental health ambassadors and a member of Girl Power. She also does all of this while carrying a busy work schedule at Crumble Cookies, and she's coached youth soccer. Olivia is going to pursue, or hopes to possibly pursue, something in nursing and/or engineering. Our 12th graders. Emily Humble is actually, Emily's actually not here tonight either. She busy work schedule herself. Emily has a 4.68 grade point average, all in higher-level CCP courses. She's a member of NHS Gear Up Movie Club during her time here. This is very impressive. She's attending University of Cincinnati with a double major in biological sciences and psychology and possibly pursuing a minor in pre-med. It's Emily Humble. Our last high achiever tonight, and I think he's here, David Lezitsky. David has a 4.67 grade point average, all in CCP higher-level courses currently at Cleveland State. David is very active in his church, Bible school during summers, and active in the church choir, which is really impressive. David is going to attend Cleveland State, majoring in electrical engineering. Congratulations to all of them. It truly is an honor for me to stand up here and present you all. So congratulations. Typically at the high school level, I think parents are done with their children. So sometimes we don't see as much support, but this one was really easy. I'm going to call Heather Akechi. I'm not sure if I can really do a whole lot of justice to all that Heather does. I referenced earlier last week's scholarship dinner. What I know that Heather did, from small details to reminding certain principles about deadlines and things like that, I won't say which principles or anything like that, to just organizing the event, her caring concern doing that is incredible. In PTA meetings, Heather's mind to just support parents, students is always evident, whether it's, hey, we have money, Parma's closing, we have money, but she puts her money, her mind to saying, hey, we've got to think about, we still have students that even though they're going off to other schools, may need some of our support. So for all you do for everything at Parma High, her caring concern about past, present and future students, we certainly thank you very much. So Heather. So typically I would say right now is a socially appropriate time to leave. However, we are recognizing some of our retirees tonight and it's always a really special occasion because these folks have poured their life's work into our students. So if you are able to stay, it'd be great to hear about the careers and see our retirees that have invested so much into our district and so much into our students. If you need to leave right now, we certainly understand that, but it is a special presentation that we will do in just about 90 seconds. It looks like I sold staying as well as I sold the bond issue. Come on. Got to be able to laugh.
So Dr. Smilak, are we, we have retirement recognitions?
We do. For our retirement recognitions this evening, we will call Dr. Schneider, who's done a great job of gathering some biographies and some nice comments to share about some really distinguished educators who have decided to move on to the next chapter in their life. So, Dr. Schneider.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Smilak had said, this is a special presentation where we are able to honor some of our retirees and we very much look forward to the opportunity to do that. So a few remarks about each of them, if they could come up after the remarks, then we'll take some pictures at the end. The first individual that we would like to recognize is Deborah Meeks, who's retiring from Valley Forge. Deborah Meeks began her employment in the district in 1999. In her most recent role, she has worked as the in-school intervention monitor at Valley Forge. A few words from her file related to that work, which is quite challenging. Ms. Meeks has created a meaningful program. Her work is centered on learning and structure. She's extremely organized. She is compassionate, an excellent communicator and connects with students. A few words from Ms. Androjeski. Debbie Meeks has been an integral member of the Valley Forge staff for many, many years. She has worked as our in-school intervention monitor for over 15 years. When Debbie took on that role, she did so with a strong desire to truly make the discipline issue to a student into an intervention. She gathered and organized a library of textbooks, novels and curricular materials for students' use to eliminate the excuses such as I can't do any work because I don't have my book. She researched and attended training on how to best work with difficult students so she could ensure that the environment was one of compassion with enforceable rules that does not escalate students into more conflict. Debbie communicated very well with teachers to ensure that students had schoolwork to complete and teachers trusted her to administer assessments to students while they were in her care so they did not have to make up work at a separate time with their teachers. Debbie has taken great pride in her work and the relationships that she builds with students and staff. She will be missed, but will always be a member of our Valley Forge family. We wish her the best in retirement. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Margaret Clark, who's retiring from Renwood. Peggy Clark graduated from Miami University Oxford in 1985 and started with the Parma Schools in 1990. Looking over her notes, it was recorded that she was regarded as being enthusiastic, projecting warmth and understanding of students' individual needs. Other words used as part of her performance reviews going back 30 years include humble, conscientious, reliable, considerate and sensitive to others. In reviewing her more recent evaluations, many of the same phrases were shared in regard to Ms. Clark. And as I read those, I was overjoyed to think of an educator who came into this profession over 30 years ago as humble, conscientious, reliable, considerate and sensitive, and then after decades of meaningful and impactful work with countless students, can walk away from their profession with those same qualities and characteristics, which is a testament to Ms. Clark, her character and the sincerity of her efforts to help students. A few more recent words from Mr. Keating. Ms. Clark is excited and animated during her lessons and is supportive of staff and students. She is flexible and always willing to do what is best for students. Renwood's Field Day has always been one of the students' favorite days because of the time and planning Peggy puts into organizing it each year. We wish her well in retirement. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Cindy Koenig, who's retiring from John Muir. Cindy began her employment with the Parma City Schools in 1986. A few notes shared about her work. Excellent. Student involved learning, pleasant manner, ambitious, capable, dependable, caring, skillful and enthusiastic. Cindy was selected for the District Level Impact Award a few years ago for the high performance of her students as indicated on benchmark testing data and for her genuine and sincere efforts to create a welcoming and encouraging classroom that meets students' individual needs. Ms. McKim shares the following. Cindy Koenig has been such a tremendous member of our John Muir staff. While I've only had the honor to work with her and learn from her these last two years, I've met and talked to numerous staff members within the district, PCSD graduates and current PCSD students who have had the privilege of working with her or having her as their teacher. Regardless of at what point we've known Cindy throughout her career, we all have similar memories of her. She is kind and caring, always willing to lend a hand, passionate about teaching her students, more patient than most, a leader for her team, a voice of reason and an overall amazing educator and colleague. Our John Muir family and PCSD community are going to miss her wisdom, her smile and all of her amazing talents she's been kind enough to share with us. On behalf of the John Muir community, I want to wish Cindy a very happy and healthy retirement. Next, we would like to call forward please Connie Consel. A few comments shared over the years. Dedicated, articulate, anticipates student needs, kind and gentle, cheerful. Also from her file and from a previous principal, Connie is an absolutely extraordinary teacher. We are so very fortunate to have Connie as one of our teachers at Densler and in the Parma City Schools. A few words from Ms. Zernak. Connie Consel has worked as an intervention specialist in 4th grade and has been instrumental in working with students. We have five stars in gap closing due to the entire team, but she has been a driving force. Connie has been an educator for 29 years. She began in Stowe and taught eight years of preschool in Brunswick before moving to PCSD for the rest of her career. As an intervention specialist, she worked with students who struggle in academic and behavioral areas. She works on IEP goals as well as all academic areas. Connie has served on several building committees, including disability awareness, building forum committee, social committee and Quest tutoring. She has been a valued member of our staff and an asset to the Parma City Schools for years. She will be greatly missed and we wish you the best in retirement. We would like to honor Sally Petrus, who's retiring from Normandy. If you could come forward, please. Ms. Petrus came into the district in 1989 and has been described as enthusiastic, fair, displaying warmth, caring and respectful with students. Ms. Petrus spent several years as an elementary intervention specialist and it was noted that this has provided her a unique perspective towards teaching and learning and accordingly, differentiation is second nature for her. During my short time in the building with her, I noted the same in that Ms. Petrus is certainly student-centered, patient and genuine in her efforts to understand student needs and support students. A few words from Ms. Urban. Sally has always put students first and has never hesitated to go above and beyond. One specific memory was during COVID and distance learning, Sally made sure all of her students had the necessary materials and supplies, even if it meant making multiple trips up to Normandy, local stores or to drop things off at the home of students. She always had creative ideas to create and maintain student interest in art and we are going to miss her positive presence at Normandy. Best wishes in retirement. Brenda Presenkowski, if you could come forward, please. Brenda Presenkowski is retiring from the Parma City Schools after 33 years of service. There are times when you know you're witnessing or experiencing something truly unique and outstanding. For me, I quickly realized this after observing Ms. Presenkowski teach and I often find myself in her classroom to observe, simply to experience her work and learn from her. Ms. Presenkowski combines the following traits, an individual who was born to be a teacher due to her compassion, sincerity and an innate ability to grasp and benefit from the art of teaching, a gift for solving problems and understanding the science of teaching and a tremendous work ethic. A few words from her current principal, Ms. McKim. Brenda Presenkowski has been an integral member of our John Muir staff. While I've had the opportunity to work with many intervention specialists, Brenda is by far one of the most passionate educators and biggest advocates for students. She is someone who will always fight for what is in the student's best interest regardless of how arduous the process. She is kind, caring and passionate, someone who can always be counted on. She understands student needs and backgrounds, may impact their learning, but also pushes them to do their best, to be their absolute best. She is truly an amazing intervention specialist and will be tremendously missed at John Muir. On behalf of the John Muir community, I want to wish Brenda very happy and healthy retirement. Lydia Whited, if you could come forward, please, so we could recognize you. After having served in a number of roles, Lydia Whited is finishing her career as a bilingual teacher at Densler Elementary. A few excerpts I found in regard to her work. Excellent, dedicated, empathetic, provides exceptional support, a heart to care for students, displaying wisdom, outstanding, great teaching style, excellent communication and excellent collaboration skills. And some words from Ms. Zernak. Lydia Whited has been in education since 1998 as a bilingual teacher, Title I teacher and first grade teacher. She is active in PTA and several building committees. Lydia is instrumental in planning our Veterans Day program every year, always making it special for our school and those who are in attendance. She has several veterans in her family. Lydia helps run and update the school website with all upcoming events, information and flyers so parents have immediate access to what information they need. In addition, she has helped welcome our new families by serving as a Ukrainian translator and helping families settle into their new school. She puts families at ease as they enter the country and come to Densler. She has a genuine interest in her students, even after they move on to higher grades. Lydia is a huge part of the Densler community and has a heart of gold. She loves gardening and spending time with her grandchildren. She has a husband, five children and two grandchildren who attend Parma Schools. Best wishes in retirement.
It took me about a semester's length of time to realize I didn't have to go into work on Mondays. So that Sunday angst that you'd get that you haven't gotten something done, that disappears. It takes about a semester, it took me a semester. Might take you longer, I don't know, maybe shorter, but good luck. Happy travels if you travel and good luck with retirement. It is awesome. Congrats. And this does conclude the celebratory part of our evening. Thank you so much to all who have joined. Now absolutely is a socially appropriate time to leave, but we appreciate that you have been here to help us celebrate. Bye guys, thank you. Thank you. Goodnight.
What did you come for tonight? Oh, I didn't know Sally was your sister. I told her I remember when she had her trickerets at Dick's. I didn't know she was your sister. Yes. How are the kids?
Thank you. This brings us to thank Dr. Smilak for all those wonderful retirees and now we have an empty building, as normal. So this brings us to Communications, Mrs. Brod.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Well, as usual, this time of the school year is jam packed full of busy activities and recognition and it's exciting to go through. I'll mention just a few of the things from the last couple of weeks. First of all, the PTA Scholarship Awards evening last week was an outstanding opportunity for us to recognize the many accomplishments of so many of our graduating seniors and it was a wonderful event as has been mentioned before. And I think to see the pride that the students have and the pride that their families have and to share that with the sponsors that have so generously given for the program as well as all the school folks that are there, it's just a wonderful evening. So we enjoyed that and had a good time with the folks. The PTA uranium sale also was successful thanks to everyone that helped with that and hopefully are enjoying some wonderful. Parma City Schools, and there's even a few students that are also active in that orchestra. And this last performance was patriotic-themed, and our own Dr. Smilak narrated a Lincoln portrait as part of the program, and that was very good. You know how Dr. Smilak has a very distinct speaking voice, and it led itself well to that program on Sunday afternoon. There were a lot of folks there in attendance, and it was very nice. And then yesterday...
Top hat, by the way.
Oh, yeah, he had a top hat on. Pretty cool for doing the Lincoln portrait. It worked out very nicely. Also, yesterday at several of our schools, we had popsicles with principals, it was called, and it was an opportunity for students that will be transferring to another building next year to come and meet the principal, some of the staff, and tour the buildings. And so that was a very nice opportunity, and for the families that took advantage of it, I think it was a great way for them to help their children transition and learn about the new facility where they will be going to school next year. It was very nice, and I will say the most popular part with all the students was, "Where's the playground? What's it look like? Can I play on it?" So they had their priorities right in order, and that's it. I know that the board members have probably all participated in many of these activities over the last couple of weeks, and we have lots more coming up in the next few weeks.
Somebody else got something?
She covered. She covers pretty much everything.
Okay. So very good. Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. Communications, when we get to this treasurer's report here.
Okay, I'm up.
Yeah. You're up, sir.
I always give you a little cartoon, so we're not going off the cliff anymore. We're just a broken leg or a wounded leg, I guess. Some major consolidation was desperately needed, and that's part of this forecast, despite looking better. New operating levy is still needed. I've said that in the past and will continue to say we need new money still, and we need all levies to renew, all new levies to pass, which we have one expiring in 2024. So this is the five-year forecast. I made it the summary version, but in year 2026, in the previous forecast, we were minus $6 million, and in '27, we were minus $37 million. Now we've improved to a positive number in '26, and not as bad of a number, negative number in '27 at minus $25 million. So I've mentioned this in the past. What puts us in fiscal caution, and this is what the Ohio Department of Education uses, they look at the first two years on line 12.10, and then the third year in 10.10, and the difference between those is the renewal levy. Renewal levy is why there's a difference in year 2025. So what changed since November 2022? The consolidation was a big factor in it. Also, our health insurance. I estimated about 6% is what the premium would go up, but when our consultants came in, they said it's 1.25% because our plan's doing really well. So that drastically changed our projection. Of course, I've said this in the past, the purpose of the five-year forecast, it's to look back three years and forward five years, and it only covers the general fund, and of course, it's going to change because, like I just mentioned, how the assumption for healthcare changed. That could change next year. I'm sure it will change, but this is the best image of what it looks like at the snapshot at this point in time. Like I said, snapshot in time, it's good for the management to look at this and plan for... So key items, the five-year forecast, go on, Pam. Key five-year forecast split into revenue expenditures, and of course, there's the assumptions, which are 22 pages if you want to read them. So the revenues anticipated to be pretty flat from 2024 through '27. I know there's talk in the state budget that we've got $3 million additional money per year, but of course, until it's passed and signed by the governor, I don't count any of that in the forecast. Expenditures continue to grow, but that's where you have salaries increases and health insurance and other benefits increasing, so that's supposed to go up 5.2. Right now, we're positive in our fund balance through 2026, and a lot of that's due to consolidation savings, but of course, the premium I mentioned before. 24% of our revenue comes from the state, and a large portion of our revenue comes from property taxes, so we're very dependent on property taxes. So we talked about ESSER quite a bit in this forecast and in different meetings. ESSER is going to end pretty soon, and we have $4.4 million in salaries that are going to have to come back to the general fund. Right now, they're paid out of ESSER, but you've got to add also the benefits, pension and other benefits that we're paying out of ESSER are coming back to the general fund. So you'll see a big jump in expenditures after they come back. If you look at revenues versus expenditures, the big difference there is that 7.6 million emergency levy that is expiring in '27. If it's not renewed, it's going to drop fast, how we're looking. So we're hoping to renew that. Sources of revenue, people always ask where our revenue come from, and mostly you can see 70% of it, almost 71%, is from property taxes. There's a little that comes, 24% comes from the state, and then there's other sources, but we're dependent on property taxes. House Bill 126, I talked about last year, that's where we would settle directly with taxpayers, and they'd give us a payment, and we'd agree on a property value. It's kind of win for us, but businesses didn't like it, so House Bill 126 was passed, and we can no longer go after that money. Last year, we got about $1.6 million, and that's going to end in a couple of years because we've signed agreements, two- or three-year agreements before this went into effect, so we could still get some money, but that money's going to go away. I said revenues are flat, expenditures are going up 5.2, and ESSER money is going to end pretty soon. This is a big question, how much of our money is spent on wages and benefits? That's a question we get a lot, and ours is about 87.3%, which is high compared to any of our neighbors. Most of our neighbors are between 75 and 80%, but we're about 87.3. And that could be salaries and benefits. It could be our insurance plan or just all kinds of different things associated with salaries and different things than union contracts. So that brings me to the end of this, and I will entertain any questions you guys have.
I do, actually going back to this forecast, the overview, the question is, I know we're dependent on property taxes right now, and I know there was a ruling at the state level about not. That was unconstitutional to charge people property taxes and stuff. Is there any movement down there for them to use that, or are we stuck doing property taxes?
Are you talking about the derelict that was years ago?
Yes.
No, there's no, I mean, they tried to justify that by using the formula for state funding. They say, "We'll give our poorer districts more money, more state funding, and the wealthier districts are going to get less funding." That's how they get around this derelict litigation.
So no real movement?
No, we're still going to be dependent on property taxes for a long time.
Okay, which will lead us into our topic later next week, or two weeks. That's all I got, but very good report. Thank you, and this looks really good.
It's an improvement, definitely. Consolidation definitely helps.
Yes.
I just have a question. I know the answer to, but if you could just remind everyone, so even with that extra $3 million that we could possibly get from the state, can you just reiterate again what our operating budget is in total?
For expenditures, we're close to $150 million. So $3 million is, I mean, it definitely helps, but of course, I don't count on that money, and just because they say they're going to give $3 million, sometimes they give you $3 million, but take it away somewhere else, so it's really not $3 million.
I had a question when you were talking about the ESSER funds that are paying $4 million or whatever in salaries. Were those jobs added because we got the ESSER funds, or they were just supplanted on that?
They were supplanted. We took those salaries and we moved them from there to the ESSER Fund, Fund 507, which we did that to save money in the general fund, but a lot of these people are 20-, 25-year employees.
Yeah, this was...
They weren't, not added jobs. They were jobs that we already had.
I get a lot of questions about, "Then you just added people because you got this money?"
Oh, no.
No, these were people that were in the district that...
They were employed before ESSER came into effect, and they're going to be employed after ESSER is done, and we just moved their money, moved their cost to another fund.
All right, thanks.
Thanks for putting a lot of complicated information into a much more user-friendly document. We appreciate that. And your presentation, it's happy news for 2026, to be sure. We thought we could get there, but, you know, this looks better than expected. So thank you for that. Thank you for your penny-pinching and close observance of where every dollar goes in this district. It's really important to have you doing that, Mr. Nucio, and so thank you for all your work, and thank you for doing this for us.
Thank you.
Just one more quick one.
Sure.
Reference to consolidation. I just want to kind of reiterate that as well, that the consolidation is necessary because of our financial situation.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's going to help out. Do you have like a guesstimate? I know we don't know until we actually do it, and then, but can you just, do you have any sort of a guesstimate on how much that's going to save?
We've been saying $3.1 million per year.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
So you get that every year.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Good job. At this point, we open, that's right, I'm on the right page. Yeah, at this point, we open a meeting to public address the board on tonight's agenda items. Do we have any of those? No, none of those, okay. Amendments, do we have any amendments?
We do.
We do. So I move to adopt Resolution 2023-05-198, adoption of amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-198. Any questions or comments from the board?
Would you like to know what the...
Yes, I would.
Okay. So the one schedule, there was a schedule in the HR section that has the employee's substitute rate, and for one of the positions, it's actually a view, an account clerk, which would be part of my department, they have the rate at $7.18, which I'm in favor of, but I believe that's an error because minimum wage is $10.10, so I think that's just a typo, and it has been fixed.
Okay.
And that's what we're voting on, yes.
Yeah, so the amendment is on Resolution 2023-05-219 and Human Resources. So thank you. I see it now, highlight it in yellow. Thank you, Pam. So, wait a second.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a second, a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-198. When we went to questions, so roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-05-198 has been approved. I move to adopt Resolution 2023-05-199, approval of the written record of the proceedings from April 27, 2023, regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-199. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-05-199 has been approved. That brings us to curriculum, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-05-200, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with Talking Points for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-200. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-200 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-05-201, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with Bright Futures for the 2022-2023 school year. I'm sorry.
Is that accurate dating?
That's what I was just going to ask.
Is that accurate dating?
It is. That request came through recently, and so we have to honor it in this school year.
In this school year, okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-201. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-201 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of our resolution, 2023-05-202, approval of college credit plus partnership MOU between Tri-C and the Parma City School District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-202. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-202 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss about curriculum, this will conclude curriculum for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. Job well done, as usual. Did you just say yep?
Do I?
I'm asking you.
I don't remember saying yep. I thought I said yes.
All right, this brings us to business. Mr. Ruda.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-05-203, authorizing the district to revoke membership with the Great Lakes Conference.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-203. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Dr. Smilak, can I mention?
The Great Lakes Conference has to go through some evolution, or at least the schools that were part of the Great Lakes Conference had some decisions to make when Parma Senior High is obviously closing, so it takes it to sort of an odd number of teams. Then, actually, Fairview Park approached us and said that they were looking elsewhere to compete with smaller schools, at which point we had some discussion about, you know, how many teams is the best possible league? I will tell you that our athletic directors were really united behind the fact that an eight-team league for multiple sports, but especially football, in all honesty, is the best configuration. And so at that point, all honesty, I was worried they were going to kick us out, and we were going to have to be independent, which is really hard to schedule, again, especially with football. It was not the two schools that remain in our district that will continue to compete that were really the target of the secession. Instead, it was Holy Name and Alleea Catholic, as there were a number of schools in what will soon be the former Great Lakes Conference that really did not feel that we should be in a conference with private schools, that, you know, it's not exactly an even playing field. Personally, I don't necessarily share that opinion. I would say that Holy Name and Alleea Catholic have been very good conference members. They're good neighbors for us. They're good neighbors for us and we have good relationships with them. However, again, not wanting to go independent, we, we did want to stay with these public schools. And so at the end of next year, we will be in a league with Bay, North Olmsted, Lakewood, certainly the two Parma schools, Normandy and Valley Forge, Buckeye, and Rocky River. We'll be, Westlake, I'm sorry, is the last one. And so that will be the eight-team league. We're excited about that. Our, our students are routinely compete against these, so these are known commodities to us. But they have, we have not yet named that league and it will begin play with the 24-25 school year.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Quick question, so we're still in the GLC?
Next year.
For 2023-24?
Correct.
And it'll be 25?
Okay, right, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so, yeah, uh, roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-203 has been approved.
Well, Mr. Vaughn, unless another board member has something to discuss, this will conclude business.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Well done. Uh, this brings us to finance, Mr. Kreis.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the five, uh, excuse me, approve Resolution 2023-05-204, approve five-year forecast and notes of the five-year forecast.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-204. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-240 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-205, approval of the April 23rd financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-205. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-505 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-206, ratification of investments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-206. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-207 has been approved.
2026.
Six, I put it a check early. Sorry, my bad. I'll read it again. Resolution 2023-05-206 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-207, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-207. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-207 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-208, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-208. Any questions or comments from the board? And actually, I am going to say thank you very much for your generosity and thinking of Parma City Schools as you, have shared your generosity with us. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-208 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Job well done. This moves us along to legislation, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. It is busy in Columbus these days as the legislature is working on a lot of things related to the biennial budget that they will adopt this summer. And I'll just make mention of a couple of things. And I will start with, um, there are groups of districts that look very much at what's happening, obviously, at legislation at the state level. And three of those groups are the Ohio Eight Coalition, which are the top eight urban districts in the, in the state of Ohio, the Ohio Mid-Sized Urban Districts Leadership Collaborative, and our group, the First Ring Schools Collaborative. And they are working together to urge legislators to include the following in the biennial budget. Number one, eliminate the expansion of vouchers, continue to phase in the fair school funding formula, use 2022 instead of 2018 for the base year for the school funding formula, which I believe they have agreed to do. For schools that receive vouchers, require them to meet the same accountability measures and core services as traditional public school districts, including support for special education students and transportation services, which are presently the responsibility of the home district. I think a lot of folks don't understand how a lot of private and charter schools do not have to meet the same accountability measures that public schools need to. And it's a big factor in all of this. Include the, number five is include funding to improve school safety into the fair school funding plan. And number six, to continue to support and increase available funding to support student wellness. Expanding school vouchers does not make good financial, academic, or accountability sense in that budget, is the opinion of many public school districts. Also, um, I believe just yesterday, the legislature voted at the last possible minute to hold a special election in August, which will be held in order to require, what will be on the ballot, is requiring a 60% vote, um, in order to change a consti, or to make a constitutional amendment to the Constitution of Ohio. Currently, it's at 50% plus one. So that looks to be on a special election ballot in August, which the legislature decided earlier this year that they would not allow any other August, um, uh, special election. So they've changed their mind and they're putting this on the ballot. And let me see. The Ohio House also passed legislation to allow 14 and 15-year-olds to work two extra hours in the evening. So instead of having to quit at 7:00 PM, they are now allowed to work on 9:00 PM. And this is on school nights. That's the difference. So that, if Governor DeWine signs that bill, it'll become law and, um, kind of, uh, well, I won't say. Lawmakers are also considering getting rid of the third grade reading requirement, which is now part of what the third grade reading guarantee is, that a student isn't reading it at grade level. After third grade, they must be retained. And it's been kind of on hiatus for the last three years because of pandemic. The districts haven't had to retain students, but that will be ending this year. So, um, the House is, appears to be in favor of it. The Senate is more resistant. And did you want to add anything to that, Dr. Smolik?
No, I feel it's pretty comprehensive. Thank you.
All righty. That's, um, that's it. That's all I'm going to talk about this evening. Okay?
Is there more?
Oh, there's more, but it's busy. It, it's very busy. There's a lot of stuff going on with education and I've spoken about it before, but, um, the, um, uh, there's a move to pretty much take away a lot of the responsibilities of the State Board of Education and transfer them over to the governor and the legislature. So that's still being worked out, but that appears as though that's going to happen. And I will just mention that our local representative on the State Board of Education, Merrell Johnson, attended our Parma Council PTAs meeting just this week. And, uh, so she, you know, she has a great deal of concerns about some of this legislation that's going through.
Excellent. Thank you. I look forward to hearing more about that later. Uh, so anything, nothing else? So this brings us to human resources, Mr. Kreis.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 2023-05-209, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of stipend amounts, approval of certificated non-compensated leave of absence, acceptance of certificated resignations, acceptance of certificated administrative resignations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-209. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-209 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-210, authorization to employ new replacement certificated staff for the Parma City School District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-210. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-210 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-211, reappointment of certificated administrative personnel, two-year contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-211. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-211 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-212, reappointment of certificated administrative personnel, three-year contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-212. Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-212 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-213, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the Ohio Substitute Teacher Services for substitute staffing services during the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-213. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-213 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-214, revision of the Ohio high, of the high school, school facility manager job description and adoption of revised job description.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-214. Any questions or comments from the board? Dr. Smolik, can we talk about that real briefly?
We can. This is part of the revision of the athletic structure. If you remember back, we started talking about this in January. Uh, we were reducing some central office positions and some reductions in this, in the athletic structure of how we manage. Uh, and all told, it was a savings of approximately $400,000, which I know Mr. Nucio has built into the five-year forecast that you saw tonight. Uh, but essentially, we took the opportunity to update the high school faculty manager job. Uh, this is not a full-time position. This, I want to be very clear, this is a supplemental. Whoever has these positions will actually have one period within their schedule that will be dedicated to assisting the district athletic director with responsibilities, organizational types of demands, but it is not a full-time position. It is a supplemental.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions? Uh, Ms. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-214 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-215, non-renewal of substitute teachers' limited contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-215. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-215 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-216, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments, replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations, approval of classified non-compensated leave of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-216. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-216 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-217, acceptance of classified retirements.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-217. Any questions or comments from the board? Do you have a question? They're going to appear next week or?
I'm not sure if it'll be next week, but yes, we do invite all of these folks to...
All right, thank you. As usual. Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-217 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-218, authorization to employ new replacement classified staff for the Parma City School District.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-218. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-218 has been approved.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-219 as amended, approval of revised classified salary schedule for substitute employees.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-219 as amended. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-219 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-220, approval of long-term leave of absence in accordance with the ORC 3309.41.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-220. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-220 has been approved.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 2023-05-221, reappointment of classified administrative personnel.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-221. Any questions or comments from the board? Who are we appointing? What is this about, Mr. Dr. Smiley?
Say it again.
What is this about?
These are folks whose contracts are up and we're appointing them.
We're appointing them.
Yeah, this is routine.
This is routine.
Yes.
It looked different to me. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-221 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-05-222, authorization to release from employment during probationary period classified employees.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-222. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-222 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes Human Resources for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Job well done, sir. This brings us to policy. Mrs. Schwark?
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-05-223, the approval of technical policy changes to Policy 4362A harassment, Policy 4440, job-related expenses, Policy 5724, preparation for voter registration, Policy 5780, student rights and responsibilities, Policy 8220, emergency closing, Policy 8431, control of hazardous materials, Policy 8442, reporting accidents, and Policy 9500, relations with educational institutions and organizations.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-05-223. Any questions or comments from the board? These are Neola changes?
No, these are just, yeah, there's no names. It's just updating the dates.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Resolution 2023-05-223 has been approved.
Following policies are being introduced for the first reading. They will be on May 25th agenda for the board's consideration. The first reading for the approval of the revised policies, Policy 4362.01, threatening behavior towards staff members, Policy 5710, student complaints and grievance process, Policy 5730, equal access for non-district-sponsored student clubs and activities, Policy 5850, school social events, Policy 8320, personnel files, Policy 8420.02, bioterrorism, and Policy 8600, transportation.
Is that another one?
Does Policy...
Oh, go down to the next one, too. And then there's just a first reading for the approval of policy deletion, Policy 5820, student government.
That's it.
It does. Oh, sorry. Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes policies.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwark. All right, very good job. Good job. All right, at this point, we're open the meeting to the public to address the board with comments and or concerns. So would you have, we have several requests. All right, so requests to be heard, forms were completed and submitted in person to the administrative secretary prior to the start of the meeting. All statements shall be directed to the board president. As per Policy 0169.1, comments that are repetitive, obscene, disparaging, abusive, irrelevant, and/or comments that constitute a threat will not be tolerated, and the speaker will be asked to stop speaking and/or leave the meeting. Please know that various board policies exist which set forth processes and procedures to be used in investigating and addressing personnel issues and cannot be addressed in public. As per board policies, we may not be able to respond directly to address some issues at this time. If information is not readily available, we will respond at our next regular meeting. Three minutes have been allotted per speaker. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and would please, first one came in was Michael Johns. You need to move that microphone back. I had moved it and I forgot.
You didn't want to hear this?
No, I was trying. We had so many people up here.
Before you started by three minutes, did I not see that he gave...
You started your three minutes, ma'am. Let's go on.
I just wanted to congratulate our superintendent, I believe. We gave him a renewal. Did I not see that up there?
No.
Well, I thought I saw it too.
Thank you, though.
No, but thank you.
Okay. I'm here to address the closing and knocking down of the Parma School. And the reason I'm saying this, the only reason I'm here is because I've been told through the grapevine that Normandy High School is not large enough to fit all of our tech schools, that we're going to have to add on to the school. That's a question. You can answer that in the end. But I also look at it as this is an iconic piece of our city. When we knock this school down, we will degrade every single home around here. The property values will be destroyed. This will be a mud spot. It's unfortunate we cannot pass a bond issue that we get 37% return on. I can't help that. I voted for it. I've helped vote for it. After we changed the process and what we were going to do, it was a great plan to do. But our city won't do it. And it's going to be, what, five years before we can put it back up there? Because we have to have new money. We have to have renewals done. Even if they come back in three to five years with 50%, the cost overruns are still going to make the bond issue the same size. We have to consolidate. There's no doubt about it. I do believe you've chosen the wrong two schools. You've taken a school in the least populated area of the city and said, "We're going to keep that one open." And you're going to get rid of the one in the most populated densely, most densely populated area in the city. Now, I turn around and say, "I'm the only one here complaining."
No, you have a friend.
Well, to those that are on Facebook and continue to harass the school system about this, you're not here. So the budget has been done well. The consolidation's been done well. I still believe we should not knock down the most iconic piece of our city, which is Parma High School. And I'll look for the response on the Normandy issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to respond? Yeah, at first, on the Normandy issue, it is large enough to fit our career tech programs efficiently. We have the possibility to obtain a career tech expansion grant from the state of Ohio, and we are seeking that grant to expand that space. So that would be at no cost to our schools in terms of permanent improvement or general fund. We did not want to add programs at this time. And in all honesty, it's an OFCC grant, so you couldn't do that anyway. It's specific to permanent improvements. And so we did think that, you know, if there is one area where we want to try to seek some funding to add space, it would be at Normandy. But again, we can efficiently operate our career tech programs at Normandy and Valley Forge without eliminating any. So it's really more of a bonus. It's not a necessity, I have to say succinctly. In terms of the Parma Senior High land, we don't intend to make this a mud pile. We will engage our community in how to best use this space for recreational purposes. The same way we've invested in the Build Our Future movement, the same way we did strategic consolidation years ago, we will seek ideas to make this something that is worthwhile and is not a mud pile and is not an eyesore. And I would just give you one example of our recent work. Honestly, right now, if you drive by Hannah, I think folks would see that we will take care of the land. It is not, Hannah is not something we plan to hold on to long term, but we have maintained it, and quite frankly, it looks pretty good. So we will engage the community in terms of what the plans for this property would be. I agree that turning it into an eyesore would be a detriment to the community.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so it brings us to the next person. Well, thank you for coming, for the comments. You, Mr. Johns, thank you. It's been a long time since we've been able to do this, and I like it.
Oh, we have a parent who's doing the same.
Oh, nice. All right, Patricia Nemeth.
There, do you want me to say it again?
I don't have it. She gave it back to you. Oh, she has a copy. Yeah, you can, you can go.
All right. I'm here to reiterate that you have no plan for a new school and now no money. High inflation, high instruction, construction costs, high taxes, and general uncertainty were all reasons that I heard people talk about. I would again ask you, you rethink your strategy and stop your plans of rearranging the school system until a later date. Our education statistics are way down, and we need to focus on education first. If we can accomplish better academic work, we can reapproach the taxpayers for finances. Right now, the board's credibility is at an all-time low. The public does not believe that you really cared about what they thought or how they felt. This needs to be correct. Which brings me to another question. Why don't you allow that people that attend these meetings to speak their minds? Why must they be in written context and then read by you? You need to start to listen to the public.
All right, Ms. Nemeth, I'm going to stop you right now. I'm going to stop you. I mean, we are permitting you to speak now, and that was approved two, that was two weeks, that was two weeks ago. So I need you to state your name. When you're finished, state your name and address. When you're finished.
Patricia Nemeth, 2707 Lincoln Avenue, Parma, Ohio 44134.
Thank you.
I'm very concerned about your plans to tear down Parma Senior High with no plans to replace it quickly. Leaving this gaping field could further deteriorate the public's trust and confidence in you, furthering your lack of support and financing. This could lead to a flight from the city looking for better education and deteriorating our property values, as he's just said. This could have a very bad effect on our entire city. I would also like to bring it to your attention that there is an online petition started by the students to save Parma Senior High theaters. I don't know if you're aware of that, but it is. And they've got about 2,000 signatures right now, and I just heard about this. These are your future voters. Again, I ask you to rethink your plans and listen to what the last election told you. Please focus on education and our children. This will get us where we need to go. Thank you for listening again. My name is here, Pat Nemeth. PS, what about the overcrowding of our other high and elementary schools? And I'm very concerned about that. And I'm telling you right now, you have facilities right back there for any kind of opportunity for education, for construction or whatever. Why are we building new? Or why do we want a grant for that? Think about what you're doing. That's all I'm asking you to do. And right now is not the time. That's why this got voted down, and I heard it from everybody. They're lying to us. And I kept saying, "I'm not sure that's the truth," but I'm telling you, the people out here are saying this. So I'm listening to people. Thank you. Thank you for so much for listening to me, and I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. You're fine. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right.
I mean, do you...
I don't know what to say. Let's see, where we at? We don't need executive session.
Yeah, Mark has something.
Oh, you have some response?
Looks like...
Mark, you have something?
Yeah, one thing.
Move your mic.
As far as when it comes to consolidation, we feel we are worrying about education first because in order to close the gap, it was teachers or buildings. And I'd rather have teachers and still have 22 to 25 kids in a classroom than to keep buildings open, open, and have 35, 40 kids in a classroom. So when we're faced with a budget that we have a gap coming up and the voters keep saying no to any type of revenue, we have to cut somewhere. You have to make cuts, and it's either people or buildings. And buildings are a lot easier to cut than people are.
Can I also address you as well on the consolidation and the overcrowding? So these buildings, after they're consolidated, are actually not going to be, the numbers and the students are going to be either at or under what they have been in the past. So we're not overcrowding schools. We're not exploding classrooms like you've alleged before. For example, Pleasant Valley, we're getting, I think, 200 and some change students, and that's still less than what they have had before. So that's a normal number just from a few years ago before consolidation. They had the same amount that we're going to have this coming school year.
So with the, with the reduction in population, the student population, so the consolidation makes sense. And we do, I think we've put a concerted effort into our education of our students. It's been, we've praised everybody. We've brought in new materials, new curriculums and everything else. I'll get you. I'll get you.
I just wanted to ask one question. Pleasant Valley, that is the most dangerous area to travel where the school is letting out. It is absolutely, I have watched people go through the right-hand lane, make a left-hand turn, and cut me off because they don't want to wait in the turn lane because it's already backed all the way to your room.
Yeah.
There has to be something done about this. You had 200 students today. This becomes an absolute horrible situation. I don't know if it made the parking lot bigger. I don't know if it's go down to the old track that we have, is accessible to park on. But I don't know if any of you have gone out there.
My son, my son is there. My son is there currently. Yeah.
Absolute danger.
It is. It's not, yeah, it's...
And we're in yet because that blocks, the lanes get blocked.
Yeah.
So there you go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And I have experienced the traffic there.
As have I.
Do you have something you want to say?
No, but Dr. Smiley, I think, was going to make a comment.
Yeah, I just want to say that, I mean, to say that we haven't listened is pretty disheartening. The listening sessions that we had have been numerous. They've been, we've gone back to 2019 when we had, you know, 19 different meetings between the fall of 19, yeah, the fall of 19 and the spring of 20, then we had Building Our Future. So that's when I have some frustration because, you know, town hall meetings that we have, we have online Facebook opportunities. So I guess to say that we haven't listened, it's very difficult, and I've said this since I came to Parma. The people who tend to say that we're not listening are the people whose idea we didn't necessarily side with. When you have 15 schools and you have to consolidate, you could ask 100 different residents and get 100 different plans in return of what should happen. So I understand that some people object or don't like the plan, and I completely respect that. Where I struggle and want to make sure that I articulate my perspective is to say that we haven't listened is really, it's not accurate.
Okay, thank you.
I agree 100% with that. I think there's been outstanding outreach to the community in many different ways. I can remember sitting at a board meeting begging people to share their perspectives with us, and also to let folks know that we have, as Dr. Smiley has just mentioned, we have lots of different points of view come to us. And because anyone's point of view does not prevail in a future plan, does not mean that we have not listened or we have not sought that information because we very much have done that. I believe that the more input we have, the more voices that we hear from, the better decisions we can make. And we have asked many, many times. And I'm also just going to say, we have what we have here in the district in terms of buildings and the places that they are. We serve three communities. The perfect plan is not perhaps possible. You know, we're doing the very, very best that we have with the leadership, which I think we've had outstanding leadership in guiding us in the best way to serve our students and the best things that we can do in this district to make it the best district that we possibly can. But we have parameters within which we have to work. And that is, you know, part of the process of going forward. So please don't feel that you haven't been listened to. We may not have shared or been able to accept your plan or point of view, but we certainly have listened. We certainly have heard from many, many different people that have just different perspectives on what can and should be done here.
So every time, for every one of you that come, well, the two of you that have come or complaints that I've heard, it's like the complaints that I've heard, either on Facebook or a direct email to me, I've got 10 going in the positive direction, in our favor. Like, yeah, go forward to plan. That plan's great. Let's do it. Let's get it done. Let's do it. Let's do it. Even by elderly, by everybody. It's, I have not been met with the resistance that I hear you guys saying... It's, I have not been met with the resistance that I hear you guys saying, but I've not, it's not come to my doorstep, let's put it that way. I, I'm just saying, it's not come to my doorstep. I get a lot of positives, hey, this is a great, let's get it done. It'll be great for the city, et cetera, et cetera.
What he's saying is your perspective is not our perspective with people that we are speaking to. And I think Dr. Smilak articulated it correctly when he said, "Just because your way is not the way we're going, doesn't mean that we're not listening." It's, you know, it is several different avenues that people have had, several conversations that each one of us have personally have. Me, myself, as a parent in this district, just to put it in perspective, too, we were